Good evening. Today is February 24, 2022, and the time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to everybody who is here tonight and to those watching online. Director Werbe, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director, please approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Tonight, we will be starting off with our Committee of the Whole regarding student performance and achievement regarding the World's Best Workforce. Tonight, we will have Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Christine McDonald, Elementary Coordinator, and Dr. Brandon Lowe, Secondary Coordinator.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. Joining me this evening is Ms. Christine McDonald, our Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, and Dr. Brandon Lowe, our Secondary Curriculum Coordinator. As part of the series of reports around the World's Best Workforce, this evening, we will take some time to look more closely at the goal, close all racial and economic gaps between students. We will share the goals and the results for the 2020-2021 school year and present a look back on the prior year's data and highlight the instructional responses to address the disparities that have been identified. Next slide. In the case of performance disparities or gaps, the World's Best Workforce and achievement and integration intersect in their purpose. Both are focused acutely on the elimination of academic performance disparities found when examining racial and economic student groups. Last year was the full year of hybrid learning and full distance learning for our students. Under the health and safety protocols, some adaptations were made to assessment administration. The district's local measures had wide participation because not only were the assessments computer-based, but they also were be able to be administered in the distance learning model. The state accountability tests, however, were still required to be administered in person. With almost 30% of our students in full distance learning, participation rates were very low. Many families, even those in the hybrid learning, chose to opt out of the testing. We have, and in our district-supported, we did use all of our measures as much as we possibly could, including those that were administered one-on-one, and we were able to establish a common protocol to do that online with our students. The state mandated tests, however, we offered the options, and out of all of the state-administered required tests, we had approximately 150 students from distance learning who chose to participate. The rest chose not to come in person for the testing. Following the guidelines for goal-setting and measurement, the school district used only academic indicators in reading and math. The results focus on student groups who have been historically underserved by the educational system, and these are the areas where we continue to see the results of that underservice in the disparities in achievement. The board has seen the information in the comprehensive goal presentation earlier this year for our key findings in the academic areas using the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. This is the assessment that is required for some goals through the World's Best Workforce Guidance. The district, one key finding is that the district did not meet the goal that was set in 2018. The goal was to reduce the gap to 18.5% for our students of color and our white students, and for our students who are eligible for free and reduced meals versus those not eligible, to 22.8%. However, the results show that we did not meet that goal. For our students of color, we saw that our participation dropped from 98% in the previous year to a simple 58% for this particular year. The gap, however, did not change or shift from 27.3% to 26.2. For our students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch, that socioeconomic group, we saw, again, participation drop from 98% to 55%, and the gap gained a significant growth within that. However, using the district local FastBridge assessments for literacy and math, we are able to see a little progress in the closure of economic disparities. Beginning with early literacy for kindergarten and first graders, we see the gaps persist with some positive growth in all comparison groups except for our students that are served by special education. In many ways, the hybrid and shifting of learning models throughout the year was very impactful to these very young learners in kindergarten and first grade. The early literacy assessment really, really was difficult to administer interventions, especially for our students who needed the extra support of special education. In the area of reading comprehension for grades 1 through 5, the disparities were most clearly seen amongst our BIPOC students, our students of color. The other groups show very little change in that disparity amount. In the areas of mathematics, there is a very different landscape. Our BIPOC, our English learners and our students eligible for free and reduced meals struggled greatly under the hybrid and distance learning models in the area of mathematics. The students served by special education, however, responded well to the interventions and instruction that was provided. Part of this really needs to look at how the transition of the curriculum moved, especially for our students in distance and hybrid learning. There really, because of the gaps in the hybrid learning, because there really was not that continuity of practice and intervention that was available to students that could have supported their skills in mathematics much better. Looking at middle school, the middle school moved from a distance learning to hybrid for the entire school year. At no time were they in person for 100%. The performance disparities, however, saw a few changes. An indicator here could be that students maintained but were unable to accelerate as much as needed. In order to close the gap, you need accelerated learning, and we were able simply to maintain. High school, the indicator is the ACT test. Students were delayed in taking the ACT from the prior spring, and so in the fall, we had two groups of students who were tested, both the 11th graders and the incoming 12th graders, who missed that opportunity in 11th grade. Because, again, that test was required to be administered online or in person. We saw a drop in the number of students who participated in that test. The state requirement is that all students are given the opportunity to participate in a college entrance exam. We saw that number drop. We saw the performance disparity also close a significant amount. However, that really is more of an indicator of, while our BIPOC students did score much better for their composite score at a 19.1, the white students then maintained or dropped slightly. So there's a lot of promise to be said in that composite score and the work that we're doing. However, the disparities between our district BIPOC students and white students in the actual content test remained in about the 20% range. This hasn't shifted or changed significantly, and the results show basically areas of focus this year for the high school curriculum alignment and review. And, of course, participation was impacted by the pandemic. As we look at the data and we see that there continue to be significant challenges and the impact of the pandemic from the prior year of shifting learning models and continued hybrid learning for our students, we really did work together as a CISA department to move forward with some instructional and curricular responses. I'm going to ask Ms. Christine McDonald to share a little bit of what that instructional response looks like in the elementary.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Christine McDonald. I'd like to first introduce myself. I joined this amazing team on November 1 of this school year, and prior to that, I've had 23 years in education, 10 as an elementary teacher, and 13 years in administration as a principal and director of curriculum instruction. And so I believe my passion for student learning and best practices in teaching and learning really drew me to this position, and I'm excited to be here and move forward together. I'd like to take a little time to speak about what's happening at the elementary level in regards to our results. So in regards to curriculum and instruction, we are examining the foundational reading practices at our elementary level, specifically in our kindergarten, first grade levels. I can share with you at this time that we have an elementary school that is piloting a foundational literacy program in our kindergarten age. And at this current time, they are seeing positive effects to the point of approximately 72% of those kindergartners receiving this foundational literacy program have shown typical to aggressive growth as measured by this winter's reading FastBridge assessment. So we find very positive results in that. Paired with that, we have worked in conjunction with the summer school program. It started last school year in response to our literacy results. Our program called Being a Reader, sets that are traditionally taught in our regular school year, was also implemented into our summer school program. The teachers saw great success in the sense that children were able to maintain over the summer their learning skill sets instead of having that traditional learning loss that we see in summer programs. Because of the positive effect, we are going to replicate that implementation of Being a Reader in our summer school programs as well. I'm excited to talk about our mathematics program. As you may be aware, we are piloting math expressions with the intent of full piloting or full implementation, rather, for the 22-23 school year. I can say firsthand, I have been visiting the classrooms where the math expressions curriculum is being piloted, and I'm extremely impressed, both from my experience as an elementary principal and curriculum instruction director, extremely impressed with what I'm seeing in the classrooms. I would say that the number sense and the ability to math talk with our students from kindergarten through fifth grade, I'm, again, extremely impressed with the ability for students to talk. Their mathematical thinking and reasoning were fantastic. And so from what I'm experiencing and the support that we're having with the publishing company and the amazing work of the steering committee, I believe that this will be a successful implementation and hope to see improvement in our students' mathematical learning as we move forward. In regards to our multilingual language learners, Dr. Lowe will speak more to it, but we are implementing a PSYOP program, which is an instructional practice to assist our multilingual students. And again, Dr. Lowe will speak more to that in his presentation. In regards to our student-centered and guided data, we are excited to announce that we have two schools in our district that are part of a FAST to Success program with the University of Minnesota. And that is a program where they are working with our staff. The professional development is to really look at our student results and enhance our instructional practices based on our students' information, not just in our intervention levels, but also at our Tier 1 or our direct core instruction in our classrooms. And so we believe that has been added value to our school district, and we're hoping to add additional schools to the FAST to Success program for the 22-23 school year. And finally, we are focused on the ever-importance of relational, relationship-based schools. And as you are aware, we are in our first year of full implementation of the second-step curriculum for our kindergarten-through-fifth-grade students. And as stated, they have morning meetings where they are focusing on building relationship and trust within the classroom, not just between the teacher and the students, but students to students as well. And we hope with these changes that we will see an improvement in our student learning and closing the achievement gap. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandon Lowe. It's kind of bizarre to be called Dr. Lowe so frequently because I just defended not too long ago. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and to share with you. I'm from Florida. I've been a school administrator for some years there, but moved from Florida in more of an urban school setting to come here and serve our students here in 191. So it's been a great pleasure and honor and privilege to work with this team and especially to work with our students in our schools. Our principals are amazing. Our teachers are amazing. You know, they're doing a great job. So I wanted to bring out a couple of things that we are doing in the middle and high schools to try to close the achievement gap. So one thing that I want to point out is math intervention teachers, and these were, these teachers are paid for with federal recovery funds. And currently, the two teachers have been working predominantly with students, providing direct services to students. I think in the coming months, we're going to try to shift and transition that into be more of a coaching model so that they're training, so that they're training teachers to do some of that same work that they're doing now. There's also the embedded what I need or when time that is in the middle schools, and that really serves to just facilitate individual support, whatever the students need. That's why it's when time. If it's remediation, if it is, you know, some type of accelerated activity that the students need, that's the time that that's happening. And we are working hard in trying to make sure our teachers know how to use that time well and can make the most of that time. But I think that this is going to be a key in moving this work forward of removing the achievement gap. Christine mentioned PSYOP training. So this is a training that we are providing with a cohort, to a cohort of teachers, with the purpose of teaching them ways they can support students that are learning English, maybe they're new to the country, maybe their English skills aren't, you know, at the full, complete proficiency level. But those students still have the ability to access content. They still have the ability. They still have the same thinking power that anyone else has. So teachers are being trained to help, you know, overcome the obstacle of English as a language, to really deliver powerful content that's at grade level for those students. And so it's a cohort of teachers that are being trained right now. They're at all levels, elementary, middle, and high, and we're going to continue that work as well. And then I want to bring out Avid for just a minute. One strategy that we've had with Avid over the last year is really specifically targeting training for individual teachers based on either their interest or based on administration or like the coordinator at the school, based on what they need, rather than, you know, doing kind of so much blanket training. We have a lot of variation in levels of experience with Avid, so we're really trying to target that support based on individual teachers' need. So that's at the middle school level. At the high school level, the same PSYOP training that we're doing with middle and elementary, and then also Avid targeted professional development in the same way that we're doing at the middle school level. I also want to bring out two other things at the high school, and I'm glad that Dave is here, because we are really trying hard to push students that, to take more advanced and more rigorous courses. So many of our students are not achieving at the level that they really could, that they have the potential to do. And so lots of things, lots of projects to try to make this happen. But one particular thing, project that Dave and Chris did yesterday that I was so happy to be a part of, is they had teachers look at their rosters. To begin with, we talked about some demographics, demographics of the school, demographics of enrollment and rigorous coursework, and just let the teachers know. We let them see that, you know, rigorous courses at the school are, you know, this is the pie chart with who's taking these courses. And then teachers were able to look at their current rosters of students and their registrations for next year and try, they went one by one down and said, you know what, this student is underselling themselves. They can do higher. And so those, they submitted a form. The conversations are going to happen from here between teachers and students and counselors and students to try to encourage students on an individual level to really succeed and to challenge themselves, really. And then also, something that I think is going to remove some significant barriers is us offering credit recovery during the school day. So many students get behind in credits, and then they are just unable to catch up. And I think that, you know, I've seen in my past that a lot of students drop out only when they don't see a way out, when they don't see hope. They don't see a way out of high school. That's when they drop out. So that barrier is removed in terms of them being able to actually regain some of those, recoup some of those credits that they've missed in earlier grades, when they can do it during the school day. So that's what I have. I'm happy to point those things out that the schools are doing right now.
And so when we look at our results, they are clearly impacted. Our ability to move forward with initiatives is limited during the pandemic last year. We continue to struggle with rollouts of programming. However, our teachers and our staff, our principals are very dedicated to responding to this data and responding to the needs of students and doing everything that we can to really respond, both with instruction and curriculum and not forgetting about the whole student as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from fellow directors? Director Hume?
So my question, you kind of alluded to it a little bit at the end, but... So many of the COVID relief funds we've received have been aimed at addressing learning loss. And I'm curious, obviously, last year, very understandable that what happened with some of those results that you were sharing with us. But are we anticipating at this point, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but are we anticipating at this point some level of significant improvement in some of these scores by the time we probably have the same presentation a year from now?
I do, as I'm looking at the winter data, we are beginning to see some bright spots where just simply having that consistency of being in school in person every day has really made an impact, really focusing on areas that we knew were weak areas, such as our foundational literacy, phonics, phonemic awareness, those types of pieces, and coming at it from different angles, whether it's from the summer school angle, whether it's from a pilot angle, whether it's from supplements that we're putting within our core curriculum, all of those particular things. Moving that core curriculum back on track to fidelity where we lost a lot of that consistency with the hybrid learning, that those things are naturally going to show us some improvements. What we're looking at is, will those improvements be enough to accelerate some of the students who have fallen behind? And really making sure that we give them that opportunity to grow that extra piece, but...
Because these disparities were an issue before COVID. So the last thing we want is for them to get even worse as a...
Right, and that's the most difficult part. And so seeing the maintenance, where we saw very few changes in some areas, that was very exciting. The elementary math is one area where I know we have not seen high scores before, and I agree with Ms. McDonald, that we have seen some excellent instruction and the increase in rigor from this pilot implementation, we believe will surely make a difference. To see third graders leading their class in discussions about values of money and in calculations and explaining their thinking supports student agency, student voice, as well as that higher rigor, really looking at students and recognizing them at high school, individually to be recognized to say, hey, you know what? I don't know if you've thought about this, but we think you're awesome, and we think you have the potential to do this high-rigor work. That's that personal connection, but also looking at how do we create the ability for students to really access that curriculum? That's the point of the PSYOP training, having folks from all different levels, not necessarily depending on our EL staff to make the difference, but being able to help students access that in their own curriculum and so in their classrooms every day. And so really making sure, and not just doing a training, but we did the training. We have students, or we have teachers doing those PSYOP lessons in their classrooms, and then we have folks who are observing them and then giving them coaching and feedback. And so that really is an evidence-based model for how we do, you know, ongoing implementation. Short-term things like the ESAR funds for the credit recovery teachers or the math interventionists, those are intended to be stopgaps and to get them in there to help move things forward. What we want to leave behind is really that sustainable system of middle school win time that continues to offer the opportunity to accelerate.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
I think so. Yeah, it's hard to know, but ask me in the air.
The answer is, I don't know, but I have great confidence in some of the systems that work.
That's the part I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Director El?
Thank you, Chair Chester. Just one comment and maybe two. I particularly appreciated the comment about the professional development that's targeted to our staff, because I know for a long time, of course, that's what we've been doing with our students, making sure that the learning that they're getting is serving their needs. And I think, you know, in terms of financial efficiencies and also making sure that it's, you know, really getting to staff where they need it most, that's going to help with what Director Hume was asking about. So thank you for sharing that. And the other question is a little more, I don't know, it may be not in the exam results, but I'm curious about, you know, what you might be seeing at the middle school with embedded honors and how, you know, how things are progressing with that.
Yeah, we are putting some metrics in place this year to say, not only participation metrics, but also some satisfaction metrics from the students themselves. Do they feel challenged? Do they feel like they have opportunities and choices to do extension work? And then as well as some academic pieces as well. So once we have those particular pieces in place, and I think this has kind of been a building year for that, we'll be able to better address. So save that question for next year.
So then you think probably two years out is when we'll be kind of hitting the ground running with having implemented and obviously still doing the check-ins with students?
I think next year will be a very strong year.
Okay, thank you.
Director Connor?
I was just wondering, have we thought about using student mentor, or student, students that have the higher achiever, that are higher achievers as tutors? To kind of buddy with, you know, like say, some high school students buddy with the middle school students in math or whatever, and then maybe even get a kind of little bit of a credit for it?
As students are looking at ways to complete their service learning credits, there are some students who are willing to kind of step out and spend that extra time. I think for us, we want to make sure that we have opportunities that aren't taking away from high school students' own studies.
Oh, absolutely.
And making sure that that time kind of meshes. And so for most tutoring opportunities, right? And so, for most tutoring opportunities right now, we're looking at third parties and teachers who are willing to take that extra time and that tutoring for students.
I was just thinking, because with the teacher shortage and then with the AVID tutor shortage, that, you know, if students can step in and even get maybe half a credit or something for that, so that it's not taking away from their studies, it's adding to their curriculum, then maybe, you know, that's a good resource, because middle schoolers do look up to high school students, and that, you know, kind of peer teaching like that, not only bonds, but it really helps, it does help support their learning. I've seen it.
It's a strong evidence-based practice to have older students meeting and working with younger students, even fifth graders working with first graders, you know, those types of things, that is very much a strong practice.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Director Webb?
I have a somewhat extremely technical question, and I don't know that you probably have the answer, but it just came into my mind, and as far as like the testing that everyone's always talking about and these learning gaps, when they're testing and they're talking about English learners, because to me, there's always varying levels of learning, especially with people who are just learning English. How do they gauge, like, where someone's at? I mean, how can they decide if somebody's actually learning it? I mean, how do they figure out on the spectrum, when they're looking at testing, well, this person is just learning English, or this one's been learning it for two years, or this one's very advanced? I mean, how does all that factor in when we're looking at testing and these gaps that we're seeing, as far as, you know, this person may have been here, you know, just started learning English, you know what, do you know what I'm saying?
I do, and I just want to make sure that I don't get too far off on a tangent, because this is very interesting for me. So, there's some areas in which that is taken into very high consideration. When we take a look at our MCA results, our Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, the state does some significant calculations about projecting where students should be performing if they have this level of English proficiency. And so, there's a calculation, and we get that information for each and every one of our students that are identified as an English learner. So, if I am an English learner who is, you know, very much a newcomer, the test is administered in English, and then they are given a score based on that baseline, a projection of predicting where they should be each year, not only with their English proficiency growth, but also in their math and their reading as well. And so, that is something that we do take very close look at.
Okay.
And it's, has very many layers to it, but that does help us measure the progress of our English learners, not only as English learners, but also in the math and the reading on those state comprehensive assessments.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sometimes when you have a lot of time, we can go through the little book.
Chester, could I just add, just a dovetail?
Oh, just follow up.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Don't go right ahead.
So, they have to be exited from EL within seven years, right? Is it?
The requirement is that students are predicted to be, to hit English language proficiency in all four domains, speaking, writing, listening, and reading, after a seven-year period. That's based on a lot of research and science that says that's about the time that it takes to develop academic language.
So then, when they are exited, I know that, you know, I imagine the test no longer keeps track of them, but we do.
Oh, we do.
Yeah.
And actually, the Department of Education asks us to monitor those students for at least two years after they have been exited. And if a student doesn't exit within that seven-year window, we still continue to provide service to them at whatever proficiency level that they need it, in the hope that they will be able to hit that academic proficiency, even if it's outside of that seven-year.
Without the funding, we just continue to do what we need to.
Exactly.
Got it.
First of all, thank you for coming tonight and presenting this information. So, this will segue a little bit from what Director Webb was saying. The, you know, I recognize the necessity of this presentation and the plan of action you presented, both systematically wise and legally wise. Legal, legally, legal. But, you know, it is assessment-based, and we've acknowledged and we've recognized some of the gaps in that. There's a handful of assessments we're looking at here, and there's some issues even given in the immediate around this. So, my first question is pretty blunt. Do you believe in these numbers?
I believe that there are some numbers there that have really high value for us in terms of planning and responding to our curriculum. Most of the state numbers are, the state accountability assessments are about us as a system, and so, they are, they become less and less valid as we look down at a more granular level for individuals, but they really do speak to us as a system, and saying, as a system, this clearly shows your curriculum and instruction is not meeting the needs of these groups of students. For the FastBridge assessments, our local assessments, we look at those on a regular basis. We actually use those assessments for monthly progress monitoring. Those are very tailored, because they're computer adaptive, they are very tailored to each individual student, and I feel like those do have some significant value in guiding our instruction, and we can measure that progress over time.
Although, I think even in those, we had, did we have some attendance fall off on those? I don't remember, or participation fall off, I should say?
I think our participation for that, because it's classroom-based, teachers, and especially for the curriculum-based assessment measurement that the teachers do one-on-one, they're very, very adept at ensuring that they have significant participation. So, in many cases, for example, we probably only have, out of all of our middle schools, 150 students who did not take the comprehensive reading comprehension test.
So, it's fair to say that based on, on a significant amount of this, it's more directional than it is specific, and that it's beneficial in a sense of driving the necessity for certain programming and actions in our curriculums. I guess, as a representative of the community, I would be remiss if not pointing out that I've sat down here five years and heard these reports and a lot of the similar stuff coming through. I appreciate the recent issues we've had around COVID, but, you know, I guess my message is just encouragement, we've said this before, but a continued encouragement to pull out all the stops and do what we can do. This board will support creative options, alternative ideas, you know, if you think you can bring data-driven solutions to the table, we'll listen to them and entertain them, so.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Any other comment, question? Okay. Thank you very much. I was very inspired to, about the individualization, especially at the secondary level, to kind of put that little seed in a person, in a student's mind, like, you know, we think, we believe in you that you can take this next step. And so, I really appreciate that, and I've actually have been, seen it recently. So, I think that is really a great motivator for our students, especially as they build their esteem and as they really look to continue to further their growth, too.
And I just, I just want to, I know that Dr. Lowe did already, but just a lot of kudos and support to Principal Helkey and Principal Belmont, just because they, working with their staffs, working with success teams, working with their advisory, really trying to build a culture of high expectation and rigor, and doing some different innovative kinds of things in their buildings, they really are focused on making sure that that becomes a place of high rigor and equal access.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We look forward to our next committee of the whole.
Thank you.
Now, we will move on to the information portion of our meeting. First, we will receive an update about naming our tennis courts, Brian Gersich's Assistant Superintendent and Dave Helkey, Principal of Burnsville High School.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. As you may recall, it was this summer that Principal Helkey and the high school team was approached about potentially naming the tennis courts after an individual. At that meeting and following Board Policy 899, the board did approve the formation of a committee that would review that request. Originally, the plan was to come back to the board, I think, around the end of the first quarter. It is something that took a little more time, but I think with the seriousness of naming a facility after an individual, as well as to make sure that we had a very thorough and sustainable process, we hope you agree that that time was, if needed, well-taken. So with that, what I'd like to do is introduce Principal Helkey. He did help to formulate, as well as facilitate, that committee, and he's here to share with you the summary of that process, as well as the recommendation of his committee.
Well, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Gersich, and good evening, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, and members of the Board of Education. So, yeah, I will share a little bit about the work of the Tennis Court Naming Committee. It did come together, as Assistant Superintendent Gersich mentioned, because of a name that was submitted. And so, there was a committee put together, the original members of the committee were listed in the information that you received. I want to thank the committee members for their commitment and their professionalism. Commitment from not only the meeting times, but they did have some research in between meetings and just time for reflection in between meetings, and professionalism from the standpoint of, we did have some very open and candid conversations. The committee did take this very seriously, recognized the permanence of naming a facility. And then, from a professionalism standpoint, when all the names were submitted, Ryan and Savannah both, you know, being recused from the committee to avoid any possible conflict of interest. And so, I think the committee, from every level of its work, recognized, you know, the importance of it and making sure that we discuss thoroughly the matter at hand. There was a couple of points, so the committee did, you know, come to the decision not to recommend naming the facility. The committee did want to make sure that individuals understood that that decision does not diminish the contributions or the accomplishments of any individuals, but the committee really did focus on the permanency of naming a facility and really did look at the language in the policy that talked about prominence and that talked about history and going beyond generations. The committee also discussed and is, wanted to make sure that everybody understood as well, that in addition to naming a facility, there are many other possible ways that individuals that have had significant impacts for District 191 over the past 60-plus years can be recognized. And through their, through their work, you know, it did come up that we are a district that has been around for a long time, and we are a district that have a lot of individuals through the course of its history. And again, the decision to name a facility is one of permanency, and the committee felt that, you know, though accomplishments and contributions existed with individuals, it just did not kind of go to that level of separating out to name an individual facility. And so, with that, that is the information that I wanted to share and that the committee wanted to make sure was shared on their behalf.
Great, thank you. Do we have, do board members have any comments or questions?
I guess I have.
Director Hume?
I just wanted to say thank you to the members of the committee. I think, for me, this seems like an example of our processes that we have in place and our policy that we have in place, working exactly as it was intended and as it was designed. So, thank you to the two of you and the others on the committee for being very thoughtful and considerate in going through that process, and it seems to me that it was very thorough and well-thought out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Director Alt?
I concur with Director Hume, and just wanted to add that, you know, in addition to the process being, you know, followed with fidelity, recognizing the names of the committee members, it was really reassuring to see how representative the committee was itself of the community at large, that we had a student and we had senior, you know, elders, and, 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 and. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I concur with both Director Hume and Director Alt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we will have an update on FY23 preliminary budget report. We have Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services, and Erin Tinklenberg, Director of Communication.
Thank you, Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight, the preliminary adjustments I will present tonight reflect the priorities of the district and maintain class-sized targets set by the board. These priorities are investments in pathways pre-K-12, support for achievement and integration goals, our equity plan, and strategic roadmap mission and core values. This affirms our priority to continue down the path we've created in regards to instruction, programming, and services to our student. Also, tonight, I will share information about our plans, planned recommendation for use of federal funds. I do want to note that maintaining the class size, we did do some research to compare to some districts, per the 2020 Minnesota Department of Education Report Card. Our ratios of students to licensed teachers in 191 is 16 to 1, Prior Lake 19 to 1, Lakeville was 19 to 1, and Rosemont Apple Valley was 17 to 1. And so, we hope that the next iteration that we report to the state will have very competitive. I know that was a question previously in a workshop about what do we mean by competitive? The preliminary, this preliminary budget proposal must reflect the brutal fact that we have a deficit in projected revenues versus projected expenditures that we must address. However, it is important to balance these, this fact by understanding recent history. For consecutive fiscal years, we have increased our fund balance, due in part to the unpredictable nature of this pandemic and the infusion of federal funds, but it is also a reflection of our conservative and efficient use of taxpayer dollars. This board has taken strategies to make sure that we are making efficient use of taxpayer dollars. Previously, I shared strategies applied in the development of the fiscal year 23 budget, and tonight, I will add some long-term strategies for your consideration. I also want to thank the parents, community members, and staff members who responded to our online survey and gave us feedback during the Somali-language parent meeting and a Spanish-language parent meeting. A few of the comments I'd like to share included providing support for mental health and reading intervention, more school-level staff, and to find operational efficiencies. I must encourage our families, community members, and staff to take close note of agenda item this night, the board's legislative platform. Please share your thoughts about school funding with Governor Walz and legislators. I want to emphasize that we are grateful for the per pupil allocation from Governor Walz and the Minnesota Legislature. However, we continue to not get inflationary increases to address the diverse needs of our learners. We must have competitive wages for employees, and we must address our rising operational costs. As I have stated previously, and we will once again, the difference in inflation for our difference in the current school year is 6 million, and the cross subsidy is 13 million. Tonight, as I mentioned previously, I will share recommendations for the use of ESAR funds. We are, as you know, probably hopeful in the midst of going from a pandemic to an endemic, but we must continue to address the impact of the coronavirus. I will ask the board to consider using 50% of the 12.9 million ESAR allocation given to 191, with 3.2 million used to provide specific learning supports, and 3.2 million to offset the additional need to... to offset the additional need to reduce approximately 30 FTEs to present a structurally balanced budget and to use fund balance to achieve that goal. Lastly, there will be additional opportunities for stakeholder feedback regarding the preliminary adjustments I shared tonight and the uses of federal funds. With that, we will go through our agenda. Joining me as Executive Director of Business Services, Lisa Ryder, and later will be Aaron Tinklenberg, Director of Communications. So tonight, I mentioned in my opening remarks what we plan to share with you tonight. We will give you some specific dates for stakeholder feedback. Next slide. Just a review of assumptions that we have shared previously. We have developed a guiding change document for our approach for budgeting, and there is a link in the presentation. We use the guiding questions, how can we best optimize our financial resources in service of student learning? Budget goals, processes, and a timeline, which ends with the board adopting a budget for fiscal year 23 in June. Next slide, please. Board of Education guiding values that they gave me and staff, and it was for their work in negotiations, and you see those here, and there's a note, "It was established by the board for negotiations with employee groups." Next slide. Our revenue assumptions, again. We are looking at enrollment of 7,219. We are assuming a 2% increase on the general education formula. That's really not an assumption, that allocation has already been made by the legislative session. We anticipate that we will use our ESAR III funds, and that ESAR II funds will be fully spent. We are expecting reduction in enrollment and in compensatory, and about the cross subsidy that I mentioned for special education and English learners. Next slide. Expenditure assumptions. We've made assumptions for salary and benefits for contracts applied, a transportation increase is assumed, we are currently in negotiations, 3% increase on utilities, long-term facility maintenance projects, $2.5 million, and a 0% increase on supplies and materials. Next slide. Mentioned the ESAR funds before, we, it's a $2 million reduction in compensatory, and also the board is in the process. We had our first hearing with the Senate Education Committee for the legislative exemption, and we hope to hear soon if we will have a hearing in the House. Strategies to structurally balance the budget, this is a review again. Prioritize those investments, as I mentioned earlier in my opening remarks. Right sizing for that expected decline in enrollment. Use of restricted funds before general undesignated funds. Identify efficiencies in utilizing resources, and the strategic use of federal resources to address the impact of the pandemic. A note about restricted funds, there is a difference in some of our budgets that have to be approved before June 30th, and one is the Achievement and Integration Budget that is due in March, and so that will come before the board for approval, before June. You just heard a presentation from CISA staff, Amina Oftodal. She presented this in workshop. These are strategies to prioritize instructional priorities, and you see the world's best workforce. You just had a SPA report on that, ready for K, read well by grade three, reduce performing GATS, college and career readiness, graduation, continuing our use of the culturally proficient school systems framework, and equitable access to arts, STEM, advanced learning, personal strengths in our K-12 pathway schools, and I mentioned already, the Achievement and Integration. Next slide. Once again, more detail about the strategies we are employing. Adjust FTEs to maintain the board-approved class size, adjust staff FTEs to maintain expense-to-revenue ratio. We have seen a dip in compensatory, Achievement and Integration entitlement. Once again, a repeat of the staffing allocations provided to building principals, which is based on the board-approved class size. Average for K-5 is 24.568, 21 students per FTE, and 912 average, 26 students. Please note secondary program class sizes vary based on course type, the external class size restrictions such as our college-in-the-schools classes, the University of Minnesota sets class size limit, instructional models, and graduation requirements. Next strategy, we'll share some more detail of how we expect to use those federal resources. Next slide. And restricted funds. This year, I had all of the budget managers go through a practice line item review of two previous adopted budgets to prepare us for development of the fiscal year 23, and so most of those budget managers have gone through a line item review to identify priority expenditures that must be sustained, any cost savings, and make decisions about discretionary funds, and submit that information to Lisa Ryder and for my final review. We did have cross-functional teams review submissions thus far. We are still not complete. In fact, one of the budgets that we still need to complete is actually the board budget, and the officers and I will take a look at that. Next slide, please. This is a new slide, long-term strategies. This is not sustainable to continue to reduce our staff and our programs and services at a time where we know our students need more, that we know there are more demands, more mandates being placed on education. And so a comprehensive enrollment strategy. What's unique about our decline, it's one or two students at every school. It's not like you can say there's a whole group that's leaving. You heard a presentation earlier from our early childhood that we have preschool, good enrollment, but then they don't come into kindergarten, and so to try to really find out why. And so we hope to have some data so that can inform a more comprehensive enrollment strategy. We do have a glimmer of hope. We did have less of a decline for this year, and we did launch our new virtual academy, and we had of those 600 students, 63 were out of district. Quite the reasons given, they liked our curriculum, and of course, they felt that their child should not be in person with the ongoing pandemic. One we have applied consistently is energy efficiency. So as you know, solar energy, and there's been more of a push, you do, you can get rebates. So it's a little complicated, but we think operationally, we should look at more energy sources that can actually have some utilities cost savings. Also, the transportation pilot. We are finding more of our students are not utilizing after-school activity routes, and so we are collecting some data about that usage, and then we are going to have opt-in for parents to opt-in. And so there could be some cost savings in that area. And of course, the ongoing review of contracted services. Debt service reduction, this board has been instrumental in that. I believe it's over seven years by sale of bonds, you've reduced the taxpayer burden by $10 million. And so that's what I meant, that we have been very fiscally conservative in taking action to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. And then, we believe we should establish a finance advisory committee. It dwindled, and we have not have active one. Lisa Ryder and I have consulted with Director Hume, who actually was one of the last few remaining members of that advisory. We think we need to have more ambassadors and another group to give us some advice to help us get out of this continual year of needing to reduce. And so I thank Director Hume for giving us some great ideas about, it seemed to be, staff was there, putting a lot of work, but it just dwindled, it didn't have enough people. So he gave us some really good ideas. So look for more about that. Next slide, I think I'm turning it over to Lisa Ryder. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Dr. Battle. Tonight, we want to focus on, you've seen this screen before, but we want to focus on the column that is the projected 2022-2023 year. So that is the first year, that is kind of a peach-colored in the header, and it has some other color coding as you look down that column. You have final audited results and the adopted and revised budget for the current year that are listed previous to that. What we want to talk about tonight is, we showed this first to you without any adjustments, and just what was that preliminary look before we did anything about this? So then, now what we're showing you is, as you look to the bottom of the screen, you will see there are four cells there that are highlighted in a light blue. So as, as you've heard about our strategies, as we've spoken about them, the enrollment to compensatory right sizing totals up to, at this point, 2.5 million, I'm rounding. And at this moment, we do not have any dollar amounts identified that directly tie to the pre-K-12 pathway. We have a row there for preliminary adjustments. These are adjustments that we have identified various different departments and what those adjustments might look like, and we're going to go through those in detail in a moment. And those sum up to, at this point, $1,468.77, and it is a draft amount at this moment. And then lastly, is the other strategy of maximizing our funding source with the federal funds. And so as you heard Superintendent Dr. Battle speak to, you know, with the suggestion of a $3.2 million use of those federal funds in fiscal year 22-23, not for additional needs, but rather for sustaining what it is that we currently have in place, that is that assumption. With all of those three numbers added in, you then see what that would look like for a total ending fund balance, and an anticipated unassigned fund balance, which would show around 12.8. I want to move next on the slide to the list of the initial budget adjustments so that you can understand what made those up. At this point in time, if you click on this link here, people are able then to view the list of these adjustments in a PDF format, and we do have them kind of broken down in those categories of first, the right sizing. The subtotal is at the top of each of these sections, so Section 1 is the right sizing, and you see the total at the very top there. The second section is the prioritizing the pre-K-12 pathways, so that has its own category, but it is zero at this moment. When you look at Section 3, that's where we have our list of preliminary adjustments, and as you take a look at this list, we do have a reference number on the far left. The next column over to the right is the list of the adjustment. If it requires or is attached to a full-time equivalent that is known, you will see a number then in the FTE column. And the dollar amount that is identified as well would be showing in the fourth column over. And the very last column to the right is then a little bit more of a description of exactly what that might entail. So the departments have all been identified on the second column in, and that is how we broke this budget down, as you are familiar with, we have budget units. And so we basically broke down those budget units and grouped those as necessary, so like, for instance, operations is all together, but they really, as, as we talked about, in doing this line item review, they were really focusing on exactly what is in that budget and really taking a look, line for line, and identifying where is it that there might be possibly some excess budget that they are not needing, that they have seen that they haven't been spending, or that they anticipate changes that could actually reduce that cost. As you, that subtotal for Section 3 then is at the top, and that's the $1.468.77. As for the maximizing the federal funding, on this page, I do not have anything listed, but I did use that $3.2 million assumption in the interactive model that you saw a snapshot of earlier. As we go back to, I just got to figure out how, there we go. So the snapshot here on the right of this screen is just that of what we just looked at. You'll note here that it is a draft, and we are still finalizing and, you know, checking the viability of some of the, of the proposals that departments are turning in. And as we go to the next, this now switches over to none of the numbers that we've talked about thus far, but instead to the other $3.2 million of the ESAR III funds, and how is it that we would utilize those dollars for those additional needs above and beyond that which we are currently considering part of our core budget? Okay? So there is a key on the lower left of this screen because we do use quite a few abbreviations within this slide. This is a list that is for the ESAR III 80% funds, and this is where $3.2 million is pretty much identified here by the additional needs being listed. The second column over is the number of FTEs or full-time equivalents that we anticipate that would include, and as you can see, we're using a figure of $110,000 for each of those for identifying the costs associated. I won't go through each of these line items, they're there for you to view and take in as information. This too is a draft list as of this time. Moving to the next slide, this is still the ESAR III funds, but now it's the 20% requirement. These funds must be used not within the school day, but instead outside of the school day or outside of the school year. These funds are listed here with, again, the description on the far left. If there are actual FTEs identified, you'd see that in the second column, this one does not use any full positions, but rather a lot of hourly wages or consulting costs, things of that nature, to conduct the activities that you see listed here. And then there's a dollar estimate as to what we would anticipate utilizing there. At the very bottom of this slide, you will see that there's ESAR III 5%. So we do have one small grant from the 5% funds that is bridging between the FY22 current year budget and the FY23 budget, which will be for MTSS and PBIS, so MTSS, recall is Multi-Tierred System of Supports, PBIS is our Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, and for tutoring needs. So that's how those dollars are being utilized between the two years. So you can see the subtotals on the very far right for each of the ESAR III 20%, as well as then the 5% grant. These would be anticipated to be used in the fiscal year 23 budget, and again, are for costs that are what we consider above and beyond additional programs that we'd be utilizing these federal funds in order to make happen. I am going to, we had some budget feedback so far, that I just want to share out what's completed so far, has been the online survey summary, which you'll hear more about in a moment, as well as this past, this past week, we had, last week, the Somali parent meeting and a Hispanic parent meeting in which we were able to participate and share with them information about the budget. And we did not share out the list, but we shared out with them our budget current reality at this moment, and then asked for them to provide with us what is it that they value? What is it that they wanted us to make sure we were hearing that they really wanted to see continue? And then additionally, if there were other ideas for adjustments that we should be looking at, what would the that we should be looking at, what would those be? So we did have that start to the conversation. As we look forward, there are dates listed here as to how we intend to continue this. And Erin will speak more towards the online information surveys, but we do have some virtual meetings that we plan to have for staff as well as our community. And those, the community meetings we would have, we're looking to hold those hybrid so that we can participate also from home. Families could and possibly have more people involved as well as those who may come in person. And so with that, I will turn this over to Erin and he will finish this off.
Thank you, Lisa. Dr. Battell, Chair Chester, and members of the board, thanks for having me. And I'm just going to provide a little bit of an overview of the engagement opportunities we've had so far and the results we've had for your information. As Lisa pointed out, the two opportunities, or the opportunities kind of fall into categories. Input ahead of time. What are your values? What ideas do you have for efficiencies? Those are the questions that we ask. And then afterwards, after we develop this list of potential adjustments, feedback. What do you think of these? What's your reaction to these adjustments that we present? So this is right now input summary. That's what we've had so far. So this is the online input form. We did receive about 63 responses from staff members, students and family members or community members. Among the responses, the top priorities, when we asked that question, reducing class sizes was mentioned the most. Providing mental health support for students, seeing that as a very high priority, especially now. And then middle school activities and athletics was mentioned several times as a priority as well. These are the top priorities. A lot of things were mentioned one time or others. Those have been shared obviously internally as well. But these were the ones that were mentioned multiple times. Most mentioned efficiencies that people wanted us to pursue, reducing administration costs. One example of how to do that was to have teachers and principals manage curriculum planning rather than centrally. Another, again, suggestion was using PALS funding to support reading instruction intervention extended before or after school year. Other people did mention things like environmental and energy reductions. Again, a lot of individual items were mentioned. And you can see some of those there, consolidating busing, having small schools share a principal, cut back on low-class or low-class size pathways classes and some others. And again, as Executive Director Ryder mentioned, we did have two family meetings that were also hybrid meetings as part of parent meetings that were already scheduled with Somali-speaking families and Spanish-speaking families. During the Somali family parent meeting, the priorities were primarily shared among, as positives that they're experiencing. This was a group of primarily parents of younger children. And they were saying they were having good experiences with parent engagement, that they appreciated the cultural liaisons, that they were experiencing success with after-school enrichment and the preschool programs that they felt those were strong, or strengths of the district. At the Spanish-speaking family meeting, those were priorities more on the need side, things that they felt were missing that needed to be improved. In particular, stronger school-to-family communication, especially at the secondary levels. They felt that the connection with students was strong, that the resources that we have in place are doing that work and then that they're not quite connecting, they're not working or reaching the families and making that connection quite as strongly at the secondary level. And then the need for additional social and emotional learning supports for students, again, especially as we've navigated the pandemic and moved forward out of it, hopefully. And so that's the input that we've received so far. Executive Director Ryder mentioned a little bit about these, sort of what is coming up as well. So tonight, February 24th, you're receiving this report. We'll continue to gather the feedback over the next week or two from parents, community members, staff members. In March, the board has a discussion, a workshop discussion scheduled, although I'm not sure if the date is set for that yet. March 10th, then we'll present, Superintendent will present a recommended budget adjustment by department and hear feedback from the board. And then March 24th, the presentation of the final recommended budget adjustments, again, by department. And of course, the board doesn't adopt the budget until, you know.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions?
I'll go last.
You'll go last? Anyone before Director Hume?
Before I, anything else, just a quick observation. The version we have in Board Book looks like there's one slide that's out of.
It's missing, yes.
It's the Somali. It's the Somali. I just noticed it too. I see the end or why do I have a?
Yep, that was oversight and got replaced today to have the correct information. So apologies for that.
I just wanted to comment that I thought that your report was very comprehensive. I thought it was very informational for me. Everything was laid out.
Director Hume?
Whatever, I don't, I'm not missing the number, but the meeting, the community hybrid meetings that are being offered on March the 8th and 9th and the virtual meeting on March the 7th. I guess my question for the 7th, which I believe is a Monday, it's at 9:45 in the morning. Are we concerned about parents being able to attend a 9:45 on Monday morning meeting to share their input on the budget feedback?
Director Hume, we have families with different work schedules. So that's that, is it second or third shift? Yeah, before they go to sleep. They prefer a morning meeting and then they go to sleep.
So my next question, what about the March 8th and 9th meetings? What time of day are those happening? Because it didn't say that in the PowerPoint.
The evening meetings we anticipate at 6:00 PM. We're just working out the details on that as we do.
Okay, so they'd be, those would be in the evening?
We're waiting on a.
Thank you, that helps.
Interpreters to set the time.
Sure, okay.
That helpful?
That's very helpful, thank you. I have one other thing, if I may.
Yes.
All right. I'm not sure that I have the right answer for this, but I just want to plant the seed as we continue these conversations over the next few weeks, especially looking at some of the input from this survey. I think we need to at least consider the possibility of adjusting our class size ratios. I know there's a significant budgetary impact to doing that, but I also see that as one of the number one things that came back from that survey was concerns about class size. We've also heard that a number of times this year from parents, students and teachers. So I think it's something as we go through these next few weeks that I'd really like to see us consider as a possibility. I think doing so could have some improved impact, one would expect, on student achievement, which is something else we've talked about this evening. And also frankly, it may potentially allow us to keep some of our newer teachers. We've had a really hard time keeping over the last few years. So like I said, I don't have a definite answer, but I think it's something we should consider over the next few weeks. So that is all I'm going to say on that for now.
Thank you, Director Hume, for that. Members of the board, as you recall, Executive Director Ryder can have an interactive model so we can actually show you based on what you'd like to see in that area, any impact financially.
I'm done.
Director Webb?
I just wanted to clarify, I think there is something mentioned about 30 FTEs. Thirty, that would be how many people we needed to eliminate?
In addition, yes, Director Webb, members of the board, if we do not use that federal funding, remember initially we set aside 50%. I'd like to use half to prevent further cuts, approximately 30 FTE.
If we don't use that money? But if we do, you're saying we wouldn't have to lay them off? Or, I'm confused.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Director, Director Ryder?
So if the decision is not to utilize any of the federal funds to help us offset that budget deficit, then you would be looking at a 30 FTEs additional cut from what you're currently seeing.
I see.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, yes.
And if I may, board members, I've spent the last two days. I am Chair of the Federal Advocacy for MASA. And I've been joined by colleagues from rural Minnesota. And it is very sad. They are also using SRR funds to stay whole with their staff. And so it is statewide. We are compiling the numbers that mental health supports are needed. We're still responding to the pandemic. So it's not only rural, it's urban, it's suburban.
So I would just like to make a comment. I would like to, you know, voice that I would like to do what we can to not lay off, if possible, because of the circumstances that we are in. We've already had shortages and just for morale's sake of our district. Them speaking, you know, on just, I believe for our community, how that would make them feel if we had to lay off staff. So that's what I'd like to offer.
Director Miller?
Director Hume, just, I'd like to just comment on your class size request. For me, the disconnect always has been that we have this singular number. And, you know, Dr. Battell, you mentioned we would put that back into the, to the calculator and see the impact of changing that. I feel in my anecdotal experience, the feedback we get on this typically is involved in the fringe. So it's the connection of that number to reality. So it's when someone goes into a classroom and has, or their child comes home and says, "We have 40 kids in the classroom." But when we look into that, we find out it's a rare class that we have those circumstances. So it's, I would challenge us to disconnect from the average number, rolled-up aggregate average number conversation to maybe finding a better way of getting to that number and implementing our practices and policies rather than necessarily looking at 24.5, going to 24.6 or 24.2 or whatever it is. I also would just comment that we have 7,000-some students, which probably roughly about 5,000 families, and we have 63 responses on this survey. Well, I appreciate the efforts that went into this and such. That statistically is not a overwhelming sample set from any given population. So just bear that a little bit in mind when looking at the results of this survey. And lastly, I, having been around this, we've had the last few years challenging conversations about budget. We've had the fortune of being in an environment where we had some offsetting things. Bottom line is, if we don't cut some roles and people, and we will have things that we won't have choice on will go away. Or worse, if you look at the results, a couple of years from now, the state will show up and take the keys away from us altogether. So I appreciate the empathy, you know, the desire to save role, you know, people's jobs. But that is, I just want to be very blunt. We can look at not ordering an extra ream of paper as many times as we'd like, but at the end of the day, that's where we're going to have to start looking because otherwise we are not going to make those numbers match up. Thank you.
Director Hume?
Thank you, Chair Chester. I think I'll start with just a top-line comment as I'm, as I was looking through the budget documents, whether it was the initial budget adjustments to the information on the SRR funds, the use of the SRR funds. Since these are budget items, we really need to have the budget unit tied to them. I think we really need, you know, especially with the SRR where they're, you know, they're just going to be for two years. Let's have those budget units tied to each item so we can track those. Same in the initial proposal.
Ask for clarification, budget unit or bargain? Because we use BU, the abbreviation for two things.
So, and it was interesting because the original.
Which is the accounting code.
Right. The original, the original document that was posted on Friday had the business unit number.
Yes.
The current document does not.
Are you saying you want the accounting code?
I want the accounting codes, yeah.
Detail codes as well or just the budget unit?
As we see them in the budget document, just the top line.
The budget unit?
Yeah, if it all, like for operations, you know, if it's in the same BU, then put them there. But keeping the detail that we have, right? And I think also, there are some items here where more detail is needed. Calling specifically, let me get up the right document. So 3.10, 3.19. Typically, we have those sports and activities spelled out in the initial budget document, the initial reductions. So we need to have those listed out. And a clarifying question on 1313, operations.
313.
313, okay.
Oh, maybe it's changed. Is it 313?
3.13 operations, 72,000.
Got it, yep, 313, yep. So on the one hand, we're saying that we're projecting a 3% increase in utilities, but in the budget, we're taking a decrease. How do we do that?
We sold River Ridge and the budget was still remaining. So we're reducing that for next year, making sure of that, as well as taking into account what we anticipate, the other closed buildings to actually cost us since you can really, as we've utilized them for childcare, that was a different situation. But this past year, for example, when you are not in the cold season as we are right now, you can't do much with that type of season. But when you're in the warmer season of the year and it's the cooling, that you can really scale back on. And so therefore, we're not having as much of utility costs for those three buildings during that period of time.
So is there an assumption that those buildings will remain vacant?
There's an assumption that they're used somewhat, but not very much at this point in time. If we were to use them fully or lease them out, then that would be a different story. But then you'd also have income to go with that.
Got it. So I guess the one point that I really, I really feel compelled to make, it goes back to our goals as a board and as a district with, you know, targeting learning and instruction for our students. And, you know, certainly asking board members for their feelings because I don't want to go out on a limb without you guys. But when I look at what was recently added to the budget reductions, 318, the $220,000 reduction in special ed positions. Just to provide some context for those who might not have been here. In FY '19, that department reduced by 1.1 million. In FY '20, it reduced by another 1.1 million. In FY '21, 637,000. And in my last conversation, when the previous Director of Specialized Student Services discussed this, she was very clear that these reductions at the time were needed and that they helped to find efficiencies and streamline our support of our special ed students. And I know that to be true. What I'm seeing here with choosing special ed, which has direct contact with our students, is funded by title funding. And we're talking about reducing, just basically, it would be either an instructional position or a district-level position. It's unethical. And it, I'm sorry, I have to call it out for what I believe it to be. There are other departments, and I will call it out tonight. There are other departments that do not have contact with students that I believe are top-heavy and need to be reviewed. And they have not been. And I will specifically call out finance. We have a department of nine and a half. We have a department of nine and a half people with two directors, an executive director and a director of finance, plus four and a half administrative assistants. And to see our special ed department being put on the chopping block yet again, it makes me mad. And I will look for whatever guidance follow board members might have on that.
I concur with Director Alt.
Director Alt, members of the board, can we provide some clarification about the special education licensed positions? So I'll ask interim Assistant Director Amy Petrowski to join me. So the reason it's one to three, for one of the position that has gone unfilled all year. And so we put the range in there because we hope that is the only one. So she'll provide some additional context with that. We are looking at decline in student enrollment, but also how do we manage the maintenance of effort? So with the ESER funds, they gave an additional, Congress gave $2.5 billion. And so we've utilized our portion of that. Right now, they are discussing whether they're going to continue that funding. So that is a hedge. The other ones, if we don't get that from the federal funds, we're going to lose that next year. And so part of my role in that federal advocacy was to ask them to continue that. And so I'll let interim Director Amy Petrowski give more of that context.
Absolutely. So we did a projection of what we are, numbers are currently looking like next year. It took us a couple of weeks to do that. And through that, we were able to find efficiencies, again, due to our dropping enrollment in our, in our, and to support our current staffing. So I appreciate your support, absolutely. And I can go back, and I will certainly look at that again to ensure that we have that. But on our projections for next year, we, we do have the ability to, to make our staffing a little bit more efficient.
It just seems that the special ed department is always here, and I don't believe, and, perhaps you have more information than I on the details of that. Me personally, I would rather prioritize our special ed students and look at our internal departments that have absolutely no contact with students, and look to see where those efficiencies can be found. If I'm looking at the budget document itself, special ed is taking a higher hit than a couple of other departments that have absolutely no contact. Operations definitely has taken a hit. And that's a tough one, too. I appreciate that, Amy, I do.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand my ground. Without data. In addition, we have, we have the special ed cross subsidy. I mean, it makes no sense to me. And that is it.
Director Webb?
Well, I mean, I just want to, you know, clarify. I mean, if our budget and our reduction in students doesn't support the amount of staff that we have, clearly, yeah, we would need to reduce staff. But I, I concur with everything that Director Alt has said. If we're taking away where it's needed, but not looking at areas where we definitely have overstaffing, and if that's not been reviewed, I ask you to go back and please review that. That's all.
Thank you, Director Webb.
Yes, and I concur with Director Alt strongly, myself. That seeing and being a parent of a child in special ed and knowing the impacts of any cuts that can make in that department to effectively serve students in special ed, and I know how much the pandemic has impacted our students in special ed, which is probably some of the reduction in enrollment, because they were not happy with the fact that the service that was provided, or not able to be provided during distance learning. Now, to reduce based off of cut, student reduction due to the pandemic, doesn't set us up moving forward to be able to say, we are strong in our special ed department, we are back in person, come back. And then having those staff, I also know that there's shortages in EA support in special ed. And yes, I'm a big proponent, and which is why I asked the board in 2019 for us to set an example as being a leadership and administration to take a cut in our salaries so that it can be shown top-down that we are looking at efficiencies and cuts across the board. Yes, our budget is made up of 80% of staff. It sucks. And if we have to face cuts, it's people, and it's awful all around. But every department needs to be examined and looked at to make sure that we're having the direct support for our students to impact their learning, because that's why we're here.
So I will tell you, directors, I did look at every department. Part of Wayne, and this is preliminary, is the risk to the district. I have looked at other districts that have reduced in certain departments, and in their audit, they ended up with a material weakness for increasing the likelihood of fraud and not having separation of duties. But I will go back again and look at it, and I will consult with a couple of audit firms to make sure that we don't end up with that material weakness. And thank you for that.
And one last comment. I think one, one positive comment I would like to make is that I know in you, Dr. Battle, we have a strong leader. And that when it comes to finances, if the business department needs to be cut, I know that you've got it. I know it.
And I know there's ways to be creative within, within some of those requirements and guidelines, too. Working in a small nonprofit, I know how you divide those duties. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a report about achievement and integration budget that we are being asked to approve tonight, later in new business. So we have Amin and Dafedal, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment.
All right. Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, members of the board, I just wanted to take a moment to give you some background and context for the achievement and integration budget proposal. The, just kind of a review of the achievement integration program and, and what the current proposal is for the 2223 school year. Recognizing that the three-year plan meets these statutory requirements for equity and integration. Our district goals focus on graduation, school readiness, rigor, and cultural proficiency. And that we have five specific strategies that are funded and supported by the achievement and integration budget. And these strategies are aligned with the World's Best Workforce Goals as well. The plan is a three-year plan. The 2223 school year is year three of the three-year plan. Every year by March 15th, school districts must submit a budget proposal for their achievement and integration budget. There are some requirements for that budget proposal. It is required that at least 80% of the achievement integration budget be assigned to direct student services. No more than 20% can be assigned to professional development, and no more than 10% can be assigned to administration. There are other requirements that are included in there, but these are the kind of the big chunks that, that you will see. Our achievement integration budget has declined slightly because it is based on school enrollment. The social workers, cultural liaisons, avid tutors, and advanced learning teacher make up the bulk of the direct services for students, and those are reflective of the projections for next year. Professional development is focused on avid professional development. And the administration, just to kind of point out, not only does it include part of the director's salary, but the avid site coordinators. And while we are required to put that under administration, know that the avid site coordinators are also providing direct service to students as they are coordinating the avid services in the classrooms, so, in the buildings. So just to kind of lay that out, that is our total, is $1.9 million, almost $2 million. Our percentages reflect more along the lines of over 90% of those dollars are being directed toward direct student services. That's the budget proposal. If, I'll take any questions, and then later I will be coming to the board, asking them to approve that budget to be submitted to the Department of Education.
Great, thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to having you back in new business. Now we will have a report about the 2022 legislative platform. We have Vice Chair Scott Hume.
All right, give me one second. There we go. All right. In creating the 191 legislative platform document for 2022, the 191 Legislative Committee reviewed MSBA and AMSD legislative priorities for the coming year, as well as our own internal needs and priorities for the district. A draft version of the platform was discussed at a board workshop two weeks ago on February 10th, and the document we're sharing tonight with the board and with our community reflects input from that workshop, as well as regarding the district's legislative priorities for this coming year. So I will reiterate those priorities, once I find the document that I had opened. There we go. The priorities in, are reducing the cross subsidy for special education and English learning, which seems appropriate, given what we were just discussing in the previous discussion around the budget. Providing a legislative exemption to allow local control of property sale proceeds, which Dr. Battle mentioned earlier, is working its way through the legislature currently. Removing the 15-day residency requirement for students enrolled in our online schools. Increasing safe schools funding to expand mental health supports. Provide targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers. And permanently fund free school meals. So those are the priorities that we have identified for our district for this year, and I believe it is on the agenda for the board to approve later this evening. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Director Hume.
Were there any questions? Is that your line?
Yeah, any questions? No, thank you. We appreciate the work of the Legislative Committee and Erin Tinklinberg for putting this beautiful document together for us to be sharing with our legislators. And so we'll look to take action later this evening. And now we will move to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectively. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Bernadette Bean, Lead Licensed School Nurse, will present.
Thank you, Chair Chester and members of the board. For board review and discussion tonight, I will share recommendations for revising our health and safety mitigation strategies in response to the pandemic. These changes are being made after review of Dakota and Scott County data and guidance, consultation with the 191 COVID-19 Health Team, and our district advisory group. There has been significant decreases in confirmed cases in both counties we serve, and Bernadette Bean will give you more details once we start the presentation. There has been guidance from our public health officials that schools should wait a bit to make sure the downward trend continues before easing mitigation strategies. So we are somewhat on a delay, but on February 18th, the Minnesota Department of Health Commissioner Jam Malcolm announced that Minnesota has seen a steady decline of COVID cases over the last four weeks, with an average decline of 40% each week. This is good news, but we must remember that surges and declines are caused by how communities interact with the virus. This is from Dakota County. The virus is not going away, but it is preventable and treatable. Dakota County Public Health promotes practicing mitigation strategies like vaccinations, masking in public, and staying home when sick. Tonight, I am recommending that we adopt the CDC guidance for isolation and quarantine for students. We have done so previously for employees. And for the board to consider and approve on March 10th of revision for visitors en mask. With that, I'll turn it over to Bernadette Bean for the latest data, and then I will walk through my recommendation for revision of the health and safety protocols.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Chair Chester and Board of Directors. During the last board meeting, the trajectory of the COVID metrics was promising. And I have to say, it's still promising for our state and for our local counties. The positivity rate in Minnesota for Week Six, which is February 6th to February 12th, dropped from, dropped to 7.9%, and last week it was 11.2%. Both Dakota County and Scott County have also seen a drop in their positivity rate. Current rates are 8.8% and 8.3%. Last week, these rates were 12.6 and 10.5. In terms of the CDC's level of transmission for positivity rate, we have dropped from the high rate of transmission to substantial. For the Dakota County and Scott County, seven-day case rate for positive cases per 100,000 has decreased also. Last week, Dakota County's case rate was 364, and this week it is 151 per CDC. Scott County, the rate too has dropped from 446 to 136. In terms of the CDC's level of transmission for case rate, we are still in the high category. We know that these two metrics are slowly losing their validity, and partially due to unreported home positive test. Experts are saying that a better indicator of COVID transmission is the hospitalization and death rates. It is anticipated that CDC, as early as tomorrow, will be releasing a new guidance pertaining to transmission, and will focus on these factors and starting to move away from the case rate and the positivity rate. Both hospitalizations and death rates have decreased in Dakota County. Scott County had nine hospital admissions in the last seven days, which was a decrease from last week of 13. For Dakota County, this too has dropped to eight, and last week there was 19 hospital admissions. In terms of death, Dakota County had three reported deaths this last week, and Scott County had one reported death. For District 191, cumulatively for school, for staff, we have been informed of 324 positive cases for the school year. Last week, five cases were reported, and this week only four have been reported among staff. For students, cumulatively, we have been informed of 1,406 positive cases. Last week, 30 cases were reported, and this week only four cases have been reported. A newer metric that is making its surface to be known is the COVID viral load in our wastewater treatment plants. This data showed that Omicron peaked a couple of weeks ago, and that is, we are now seeing a rapid decline. And they have even seen that in some counties, which they have not named, they are seeing no viral load in the wastewater plants. When we continue to do our screening, testing, and vaccination, staff are offered an optional screening biweekly for COVID. For students and staffs, we continue to have our partnership with Dakota Child and Family Clinic to provide that testing for our students and staff. And then the other, we also have home kits. Today, we just received our second order, which was placed at the beginning of January. So we just received eight pallets of BD Veriter home kits. And I anticipate next week, we will receive the rest of our shipment of the BioNext Now Home Testing Kits. So we're being really creative on getting these in homes, because they're only good if they're in homes. if they're in homes and being used. Many, many sites are passing them out during conferences, and we're just trying to be creative in how we can get these in hands for families. Last time I talked for vaccinations, Pfizer had announced that the following week, they were going to have a meeting with FDA to look at an emergency use authorization for the vaccine for five and under. As you may have heard, that that was put on hold, partially because they needed more detail on a third dose recommendation based on clinical studies. It is anticipated that they may reconvene that meeting with FDA in April. So, yeah, after they get more studies back. Okay, so, health and safety continues to be a priority for our community. As we have navigated this pandemic, our community's strength through these past two years have been due to the partnership and the collabora, collaboration with the board, administration, staff, students, families, and our local state and, and our state and local experts. The current and projected metrics lead us to a time to begin to transition from a pandemic to an endemic. In other words, a routine disease control model. In any good communicable disease model prevention, mitigation is necessary. And our district has many gold standard best practices in place for our district that will continue and should continue to reduce disease. The one, the stay in home with, when you're sick, that really has a whole new meaning now with COVID. But it still becomes the foundational skill to keep our whole, our schools safe, is staying home when you're not feeling well. As Dr. Battle said earlier, CDC and MDH had announced recently, or at least a month ago, a shortened quarantine and isolation option for students and staff. We implemented that for staff, partially due to staffing issues and not having vacancies filled. But what that allowed us to do as a health service team, it allowed us to really give some individualized guidance and check-ins with our staff that were positive, to really determine, are you healthy enough to come back? As we know with COVID, not everybody feels wonderful on Day 6, and sometimes it's longer than Day 10. And so, by having a, a smaller group to start this guidance with, we were able to really do some good checking with our staff. Now, we are ready to transition this to our students, partially because our case numbers are down. With four positive students reported in the last week, we are able as health services to really work with our families, partner with them, and make sure that children are ready and healthy enough to come back to school. So, and that we propose to start on Monday. Then I will turn it over to Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Bernie. Chair Chester, members of the board, wanted to add the slide to recall the current board resolution in effect. Sections 1 and 2, I'd like to review. Section 1 refers to the opening of this school year, that all staff, students, and visitors must wear a mask. In section 2, you gave me authorization after consultation with the board chair and notification, notification to the board to select and implement different health and safety measures. The last sentence in section 2, that these shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with me and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deem it in the best interest of the school district and its students to implement different health and safety measures. A link to the full board resolution is included, if the public would like to look at the full resolution. I'm asking for your consideration to make changes to the following health and safety to visitors and volunteers. Allow visitors and volunteers in our schools, strengthen partnerships, supports the learning environment for students, and promote school spirit. The allowance of visitors is dependent on building logistics and principal direction. When visitors and volunteers around students, masks will be required. Bernie, would you like to say anymore about this recommendation from the health team?
I believe throughout the pandemic, we've always weighed out the risk and the benefit. And having our families safely come back into our buildings, see a program, that's really important. We're at that stage where our, our community wants that and needs that. And so, as space allows, as principals develop what will work in their building, we, we should, we need to be able to start offering this to our families, to be a part of that for their children.
Thank you. The next recommended revision is for masks. So, for staff, going from required to recommended when working with students aged five and over, and the mask is required when working with any pre-kindergarten program a student. For students, moving from required to mask recommended for ages five and over, and mask required if over two years of age and enrolled in any pre-kindergarten program, primarily because they do not have access to the vaccines. Vaccines are widely available, and I believe at the last board meeting, I did share what Scott County Public Health told us about vaccinations, that initially you will get the true believers, and you'll have a great number of people asking for the vaccine. Then it will drop off. Those people need to have questions answered, are more cautious. And then, there's a third group that simply have no interest in vaccination, and so they're not seeing increases in the vaccination rate. And so, with that, I give that to you for your consideration, and that concludes our report.
Thank you. Do we have any board members, questions, comments? Director Werb?
I guess I'd just like to say that we should be cautious, because I know, you know, last year, we were ready to, you know, go back to normal, and then Omicron hit, and we were back in the same place. So, I, I realize numbers are diminishing, and things are looking very good and very promising, but it's very easy to get overzealous, and then things go another direction. So, I just don't want us to be, you know, to, doing something too soon, and then, you know, another variant hits. I just, I just want us to be cautious, that's all.
Director Connor?
I agree with Director Werb, but if we are considering, I'm not wholehearted about that getting rid of the masks too soon either. I'm very tired of them. They hurt my ears. I've tried other things. Everybody, nobody likes them, but I'm just cautious about getting rid of them too soon, like you said. But can we just maybe consider going to face shields then, as opposed to nothing? That way, even working with the younger kids, your face can be seen, but it's still covered, and I guess the particles that can spread from your mouth are still covered. So, that's my suggestion to consider.
Director Alt?
Just a question first. The Chair Chester, the committee that you represent us on, can you tell us, you know, give us a flavor of the conversation at the last meeting around this?
Yes, well, so, the, the makeup of the group is, there's Assistant Director, Assistant Superintendent Gersich, Superintendent Battle, Bernie. We also have members of staff. We have representatives from our teachers' union, and parents, a couple of parents, and, and then myself as the board representative.
Custodians.
And the custodians, yes. And also relaying information from, for athletics and such too. And so, the, the talk is, was where there was changes like masking optional, we threw in masking recommended, because we didn't want, we are hearing those concerns and also realizing and, and hearing from the, the group, there's kind of a consensus of, you know, we, we need to be planning for an endemic, and not that we're continually living in a peak of a pandemic, and so, what does an endemic look like for this district, for our community? And so, masks obviously are, are one. But the largest one was hearing about the interest of having more family engagement in the schools. And so, like, how do we bring visitors back was really a larger topic for us. And in trying to be able to, to do that, to try to build more school community, and maybe offering then, there might be more, like, end of school year group gatherings and, and all of those things that we would love to, that we sincerely missed in the last two years. So, so those are kind of some of the things, and realizing that, we also know, all of, all of the districts in Minnesota are facing the, the talk about masks and, and when, and what it should look like for this district. And so, we really did rely on hearing about the numbers and the recommendations. And then, there was a chart that was shared of, like, when you kind of cycled down, the, the mask requirements, I remember seeing, and I, I don't, and I know it wasn't shared here, so.
Another point, initially, I gave a date of March 3rd, and the committee gave, the group gave feedback on that. You want to share?
I'm not sure if I remember. Yeah, there was, there was wanting to, to make it earlier, or like, more like midweek, and we were saying it should really reflect a Monday, and so, there was a talk of, if it were to move through an approval, should it start this Monday? Should it start the 7th? Should it start? And then, bringing that in and realizing and recalling our resolution too, and needing to take board action, then it's been kind of progressed a little later, and hoping to hear what the CDC is going to come back and recommend in terms of masking down or masking optional, or, or what are required, recommended, and to kind of base it off of what might be coming out here soon too.
Thank you. That was helpful. I guess with that, then, the, I concur with Directors Werb and Connor, that caution, we should exercise caution. I too would like to hear what the CDC has to say. And I think the one thing that I, the one note that I did take down during Bernie's presentation is that we're still in the substantial infection rate area. And I guess that's, that's concerning, and, you know, no crystal ball is going to necessarily tell us what the reaction will be, you know, one way or the other. But I, I really, I really would like to exercise caution and make sure that, that we're keeping people safe, wholeheartedly support bringing families back, though. I think our families need to be back in the schools. We, we need that.
Other comments, questions?
Go ahead. All right.
Director Hume?
I don't, I don't disagree with anything anybody has said so far. I think we need to be very cautious in whatever we decide. I think we've done an outstanding job for the last two years in terms of mitigating the risk to our students and our staff. I think we need to do everything we can to continue that. What I am frankly most concerned about at this moment in time is the fact that approval for the vaccine for our preschool students keeps getting delayed, and I, and given that we have preschooler programs in every one of our elementary schools, I'm very concerned about allowing the non-preschool students in our elementary schools and the non-preschool teachers in our elementary schools and staff to be unmasked in an environment where our preschoolers are still not able to get a vaccine. So, that's my biggest concern. And I know there's not a huge level of interaction between the preschoolers and the older students, but it's still, like, a lot of our parents are very concerned about exposure. I have friends, and it's not just here, I have friends in other parts of the country who have preschoolers, and they're very concerned about the same thing happening in their schools in other parts of the country. So, I know this is not an issue that's exclusive to us, but it is an issue that I think we need to factor into whatever decision we make, is how is this going to affect our youngest learners and their families, many of whom have older siblings that will not, potentially not be masked at school, and will likely have an increased level of exposure that they will be bringing home for their preschool-aged siblings. So, that is my concern. And my other question slash recommendation, because I agree with what Director Alt was just saying, when this is brought to us for a decision, I would really like to see the visitors in the building, a separate vote, I guess, from the masking vote. And that is all I had to say.
Director Miller?
So, I've heard a couple of comments here. Point of order or clarification, my understanding is, under the current resolution that we adopted on 8/12, there would not be a vote on this. So, we would need to rescind that resolution. That resolution gave full authority to Dr. Battle to make the decision in consultation with you and, and notification to the board. So, if we choose to have that, that's fine. We would need to first rescind that resolution and regain control of the, of the circumstances, which also means then we're, we will need to vote on any other actions taken throughout the, or put the, change the resolution and put it back in place, just to be clear.
So, like, adopt a different resolution?
That's correct.
Yes. And I may be hearing that's what we're recommending.
Well, like, that's your, you can put the forward for a motion, yes, that's correct. We need to do that, yes.
Any other comments or questions? I think I have a clarifying. So, with, where, for the, for the visitors, we're saying that if you're coming in as a visitor in the school during the school day, you're required to wear a mask. But then, here, we're stating it's recommended for staff and students during the school day. And so, I'm curious of that, like, how do you enforce a requirement on visitors, but have it only be recommended to those already in the school? I think, I think seeing that now in these two slides, the way it was presented, I'm seeing a discrepancy there, like, it could be like a conflict. And so, we would want to align there. And I think my rec, what I would love to see is that chart, it's kind of like when we were going into, if we hit this level, then we know we're going to go to distance learning. If we hit this level, we're going to do hybrid. If we're going to hit this, kind of seeing something like that related to masking, I would, I would really like to see, because that may help educate us in order to, to support.
And the hope is, when CDC releases their new information, there'll be some guidance on masks. The one information that was kind of hinted to us was that even though case rate is in a high level of transmission, that we will, we should see a decrease in that level based on their new metric system that they're going to propose. But we have to see it first, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that's why we didn't use the chart. It's usually Tuesdays the CDC comes out with recommendations.
Yeah, once CDC presents it, then MDH has to approve it also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we will have reports on committees, board appointments, and school assignment reports. We'll start with committee reports. Policy Committee?
You have a report? That's your, yeah. Oh, that's the report?
You could say you didn't meet yet.
You got snowed out, I think, is your word, right?
Well, yes, the policy, I was, I just, I accepted the chair position for the policy meeting. We have not really had another meeting since.
Thanks a lot, snowstorm.
Thank you, yes. Unexpected, well-planned, snowstorm.
Nobody plans a snowstorm.
And then, we've heard from legislative, but I don't know if there's an addition to the legislative committee?
Not really. We had our monthly meeting on Tuesday, February the 8th, where we did, again, review the legislative priorities document, discuss the legislative exemption. we did again, review the legislative priorities document, discuss the legislative exemption, currently working its way through the legislature, and discuss the future timing of our monthly meetings, as we are working to coordinate with the policy review committee so that both committees are able to meet on the same night each month, moving forward for ease of live streaming purposes for our public. This concludes my report.
Any report from negotiations?
Just a brief one, that we met earlier this month to conduct a final review of the unaffiliated policy. There were no recommend, recommendations for change by the committee, and it is now on tonight's agenda.
Other board appointments or assignments to report on? Director Connor?
Yes, just from the AMSD, we got our first meeting in our, yeah, no, our second meeting of the year, February 4. And it was by Dr. Susan Bauer. They mostly were just talking about the demographics. Wait, just a minute here, I have. They were talking about, well, for one, let me go back. They were talking about recruiting young professionals to the Chamber of Com, oh, that's different. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting my notes mixed up. I apologize. Okay, so for AMSD, they were talking about demographics and the census for 2020, and what the diversity results were and the growth. And Dr. Battle already kind of reviewed a lot of that, because she was also at that meeting in her, one of her updates. And so I won't, you know, go over her points, but just to know that, that we are, we are at a workforce shortage due to age and baby boomers retiring. And they just had statistics like that, all demographic census statistics. It was very interesting that in 2014, through the depression, that we had more jobs than people. And then somewhere through 20, oh, I'm sorry, it was 2004. And then somewhere in 2012 to 2014, we had more people than jobs. And now, again, we have way more jobs than people. And they see that that's going to continue on. And the birth rate is also decreasing in all races. They think that may have something to do with the pandemic, but just because of the state of our economy. And then, you know, more details if you want to look on the AMSD website. Oh, and then they did touch a little bit on Governor Walz and what his funding was going to be for schools, and that he was going to back the universal food program. And they gave some breakdowns of that. That's my report.
Thank you. Other reports? Director?
Thank you, Chair Chester. So I visited Hidden Valley earlier this week, and had a really wonderful conversation, wonderful and informative conversation with Principal Black. She is just doing incredible stuff with her team, innovating in terms of trying to engage families. She's working on, I was really intrigued by, she and her team are working on translating, providing translated copies of grade reports, where you have the native language in the left column and English in the right column. And so then the teachers can kind of go down each, each list. And I, I thought that was really cool. And then also, we reviewed some of the, you know, some of the roses and, you know, roses and thorns of, of the pandemic, some of their successes, and took a tour of the, of the school. And it's just, it's looking clean, and the kids are happy. And interesting to see the different items that are in the classrooms as a result of the pandemic. There was a kindergarten classroom that had laundry baskets for the kids to put their snow gear in, so that they didn't have to cluster into, you know, near the hooks to hang their, their things up. So I thought that was, that was kind of neat. Then the second report is from the Burnsville Festival, my assignment to the Burnsville Festival. And the Burnsville Festival and Fire Muster, previously known as the Burnsville Fire Muster, has recently undergone significant changes. Per the festival's new bylaws, the governing board is a 13-member board with an additional volunteer event committee. The Board of Directors is currently in the process of applying to become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Membership on the board includes community members, local business owners, City of Burnsville staff, YMCA, Burnsville of, Burnsville, Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, Burnsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, and 191. Between the governing board and the volunteer committee, 191 is represented by myself and Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education. The goal of the Board of Directors and Volunteer Event Committee is to create a festival that is engaging and welcoming for all members of the Burnsville community, with an increased focus on music. From food to music to games and entertainment, the Burnsville Festival Planning Team wants to create a festival that is relevant across all age groups, ethnicities, cultural and religious backgrounds, and musical preferences. The Board of Directors and Events Committee met this past week. Among topics of discussion were fundraising plans for sponsorship drives and donations, which allow the festival to be free and open to all. And the group also conducted initial discussions around transit that will be provided from the heart of the city via school parking lots to the festival itself. It's really exciting to be able to represent 191 alongside other community members to ensure a fun event that offers something of interest for everybody.
Awesome. Thank you. And I'll give a report on 9/17, as I sit on that as my assignment. We've been going through significant work in strategic planning for 9/17, including setting strategic priorities. And we had an extensive board workshop session that delved into evaluating the mission, vision, and values, and reassessing and aligning them to where the district would like to see itself going. And so our next meeting is Monday, March 1, here coming up. So that's my report. Yes, Director Connor?
Yeah, and I have one more. I'm also on the Chamber of Commerce Committee. And I went to my first meeting there, and they were discussing, as I started to say before, recruiting young professionals to the Chamber of Commerce to get their ideas, and also rezoning in our district, which I thought was rather interesting, because I never understood all those zoning lines anyway. So they're talking about finally changing that. That completes my report.
Thank you. So that concludes our information portion of the meeting. We will move on to business portion. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be removed for separation, separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from this consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller?
Second.
Second by Director Connor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to new business. We will be hearing, seeking approval of a cooperative sponsorship in boys lacrosse with Bloomington Kennedy beginning in the spring of '22. We have Guillaume Peck, Director of Athletics.
Thank you, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, board members. I am here today seeking approval for a cooperative sponsorship in boys lacrosse with Bloomington Kennedy. We, our numbers have steadily declined in boys lacrosse over the last several years, and we're at a point right now where we cannot be a standalone team. And so there was a lot of seeking potential partners. And Bloomington Kennedy happened to be the, the closest in proximity who was also looking for a partnership, so.
With that, there's the recommendation. Right to approve this partnership. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation of establishing a cooperative sponsorship for boys lacrosse with Bloomington Kennedy, beginning this spring?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Director Werbe, second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion?
I just had a quick clarifying.
Yes, Director Hume.
Or more of a reminder, I think. I seem to remember we did this for girls lacrosse. Was it last year?
Yes, correct.
And is that with Apple Valley? I was trying to remember which.
That is correct.
Okay. But they, but Apple Valley was not interested in doing it for boys, it sounds like, from the report you said.
That is correct. Yeah, they, they decided that they were a need. There was another need in 196, as well with Eastview. And so just from a, from a standpoint with being in the same district, they made the decision to co-op together.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear, adopt the Achievement and Integration Budget for FY23. Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. It is my recommendation to the board that you accept the budget proposal for the Achievement Integration Program. While not required by statute, it is the practice of this board to approve this budget prior to it being submitted to the Department of Education. That is my recommendation.
Great. Is there a motion to approve this, the, the adopted budget for FY23 for Achievement and Integration?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Connor. Is there any discussion? Director Alt?
I figured I'd save my questions for when the budget document actually came forward. So looking at year over year, Director Aftedal, the decline in A&amp;I budget is about $2,000, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I guess my question is, we had, there are a couple of shifts that I noticed. One was, it was the avid teachers, no, it was part of the director's salary and benefits moving off of A&amp;I and into the curriculum budget. What was offset for that to happen?
Meaning?
So your budget didn't increase.
That's correct.
So to pull the director's salary into the curriculum budget?
Yes.
What, what did, what had to be reduced in order for that salary to be accommodated by a fixed budget?
In the curriculum budget?
Correct.
Yes. So in the FY23 proposed curriculum budget, we have done some reductions in areas that have remained unspent over the last couple of years, very much like Ms. Ryder, Director Ryder, shared with you, that there are places where line item budgets continually don't get spent for a variety of reasons. One of those line items is substitutes for professional development. And because we have been unable to access substitutes for the last two years for professional development, that line item has been pushed over. Last year, in fact, over $100,000 worth of professional development dollars were, for substitutes, were moved out of the curriculum budget, because they were to remain unspent. And then they were made available into the general fund for budget balancing.
So theoretically, we're coming out of the pandemic, and we're talking about reducing your substitute budget. That doesn't make any sense to me. Help me understand.
Sure. There continues to be and is projected to be a shortage of substitutes. And for us to conduct the professional development in the same model that we have done prior to this particular staffing shortage, probably is not going to be available to us. So we are looking at other innovative ways in which we can provide professional development, knowing that being able to access 25 to 30 subs per day in addition to those subs that are being used for illnesses or other types of absences, that, I mean, they're just, the market just doesn't provide that, and hasn't been able to provide that for a few years. And we saw the beginnings of that prior to the pandemic, and it has become extensively worse, in which case, not only are we not conducting professional development, members of my team are acting as substitutes in the buildings.
So putting a pin in that, since the funds are leaving the curriculum budget and going into the general fund to assist with reductions, that needs to be accounted for in the reductions.
I just want to be clear, Director Alt, that was last year.
That was last year. That is not this year.
That is not this year.
You're simply reducing the budget by the amount that was not spent.
Budget's not being, the budget allocation is not changing. It is picking up things that are no longer, such as the director's salary, no longer able to be covered with restricted funds, such as achievement integration, because of increased cost of higher priorities. It's, it's mostly just really looking at the assets that we have. We are not reducing or increasing the, the curriculum budget. We are simply adjusting it and spending it in different areas in order to better reflect how we might use those things for professional development and curriculum writing.
But then we're not really optimizing the A&amp;I budget.
The A&amp;I budget, the priorities, as I listed earlier in the presentation, were for cultural liaisons and social workers.
Right.
And advanced learning teacher and avid tutors. Beyond those expenses that you saw listed there, there, those exhaust the funds of the A&amp;I budget.
Okay. And then there was another shift to title, which was, I think it was the avid teachers?
Avid teachers. The avid teachers themselves, at the middle school, the .8s at, in each building, because avid is considered part of school within a school, those fall within that ALC budgeting. And so those teachers themselves generate ALC funds. They weren't able to do that during the pandemic, and because of the scheduling. And so we weren't able to account for them under the ALC budget.
I'm sorry to drill, drill into the budget like this. I'm just trying to make sure I understand. I'm just wondering why we wouldn't have opted to keep the director's salary and benefits in the A&amp;I budget? Because it, it would appear that there still is, I mean, it, the percentages haven't fully been used.
Yes. Every single penny of the A&amp;I budget is being proposed, being used for the things that are listed there.
Okay.
So if you look at the budget document, you can see that on the cover sheet, the $1.9 million. On the second page is the expenditure sheet, and you can see where all of those dollars have been assigned.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we will approve the 2022 legislative platform. Director Hume?
All right. Well, you've already heard about the platform earlier this evening, so I recommend that we approve the 2022 legislative platform.
Do I have a motion to approve our legislative platform?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe, second by Director Connor. Any discussion? Oh, I'm, I'm just glad we're going to have it. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021-2023 Terms and Conditions of Employment for Unaffiliated Employees. Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Chair Chester and members of the board, my recommendation tonight is that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2021 through 2023 Terms and Conditions of Employment for the unaffiliated employees of our district, 191. Currently, there are 52 unaffiliated specialists and confidential supervisory employees. These terms are reviewed and updated on a biannual basis. Positions under these terms are considered at-will unless a state license is specifically required under statute. Employees under the terms receive salary packages in alignment with comparable position in other units and comply under state pay equity regulations. Summary of the changes, under compensation, a 2.2, excuse me, 2.0% and 2.0% increase on the 2021-22 year, and 2022 and 23. Market adjustment on a few positions. Also, on compensation, an increase to the 403(b) match. an increase to the 403B match. Language changes and additions, encouraging graduate work in Tier 3. We identified, renamed, and reclassified some positions in Tier 2, 3, and 4. We modified religious leave language to align with other contracts. We added language to encourage Tier 4 employees to seek teaching degrees, building in the component to grow our own. We also made adjustments in language, including sick leave usage per state statute, approval of salary ranges and salaries, and existing benefits. We also did increase stays in sick leave credit. Total two-year increase of $535,000. And with that, I present the Terms of Employment for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries unanimously. Now, we will move to close this meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3C1 to develop or consider an offer of purchase of Metcalf Middle School located at 2250 Difley Road, Burnsville, Minnesota. We will take a five-minute little.
We get to have a motion and a.
Oh, I need a motion to close, to move to a closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Director, oh.
Second.
Second by Director Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will move to a closed session.
Five minutes.
In five minutes.
We are reconvening to the open meeting with the vote on the offer or we're going to announce the next steps related to the purchase of Metcalf Middle School. The district received an offer to purchase the Metcalf Middle School and based upon that offer and discussions with the board, we are directing staff and consultants to prepare a counter offer to the purchaser. And that concludes our meeting for tonight. We are adjourned.[1776.00][1776.00](laughing)